I'm ready.
On the order of the New Philadelphia Board of Education, September 20th, regular meeting. We'll start off with our mission statement. New Philadelphia City Schools will provide all students the opportunity to achieve their highest potential to become educated, self-sufficient, and responsible citizens. We are committed to providing every student a diverse quality education within a safe and secure environment through a dedicated, innovative, and highly qualified staff in partnership with parents and the community at large. Everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the roll.
Mr. France.
Present.
Dr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. Gallantine.
Present.
Ms. Sleeper.
Present.
Mr. Weaver.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two, approve of the agenda.
Move.
Addition or deletions?
Okay. On the roll.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Dr. Fuller. Mr. Gallantine.
Yes.
Ms. Sleeper.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, approve the minutes of the work session dated August 9th, August 28th, and the regular meeting dated August 16th.
So move.
Your second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Gallantine.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Dr. Fuller.
Yes.
Ms. Sleeper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, public participation.
We have Troy Glass. Here, I'll just give it to you. You'll have to come up here so I can get your, you, record you.
And then I will need your address listed.
Any place right there is fine, thank you.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions for you as I get started. How do you consider contact tracing? I'm hearing that it changed a bit from last year. So what is the standard now for sending a student home? Secondly, out of all of our students with contact tracing, how many are actually confirmed cases? How many of those, approximately 3,200 kids we have in our district, how many of them have been diagnosed positive? Last question. Out of millions of dollars that our district has received for COVID, where is that money being spent? Are we using that for work? Many American peers, peer nations around the world, including UK, Ireland, France, all of Scandinavia, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, have all exempted their kids from wearing masks in classrooms. Conspicuously, there is no evidence of more outbreaks in schools in those countries relative to the schools in the US where the solid majority of the kids could wear masks for the entire academic year. Countries along with the WHO, these child masking guidance differ substantially from the CDC's recommendations, have recognized that those decisions to make mass, students wear masks carry a potential academic and social harm for children and lack a clear benefit overall. Today, highly transmissible Delta variant has not led any of them to change any of their calculus. Anyone actually performing research for themselves understand that the COVID microbe is 40,000 times smaller than the cross-section of a human hair. A cloth mask is not going to stop this particle from getting in or out. I would ask all of you to research Stephen Petty. You can find him on YouTube, his Petty podcast. He is a censored professional in the Bureau of Transmissions. He lays out all kinds of data from masks to industrial hygiene. I strongly urge all of you to consider that this should be a parent's, the parent's decision to mask up our kids. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next is Chastity Glass.
Just real quick, I feel like from what I get out of the agenda, Mr. Glass's three questions will be addressed pretty soon here.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Just for clarity, Mr. Glass, the Stephen Petty, you've mentioned him. Could you just spell the name for me?
S.T.E.P.H.N. P.E.T.Y.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Chastity Glass. I graduated from New Philadelphia. I have five children. One graduated from Philly. I have four other children at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. I assumed at some point we would be here discussing face masks. I didn't think it would be this early in the year. However, we are living in an upside-down, inside-out, cloud world right now. Personal choice of freedom have taken the backseat to tyrannical government mandates and agendas. The decision to muzzle one's child with a face mask should follow the parents, not the school district and not the government. The facts concerning COVID in relation to children are clear. The virus is not deadly and it is not a threat to children. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, out of the millions of kids that have infected with COVID, only 460 have died. For children aged five to nine, the IFR, the infection fatality rate, is only 0.001%. More children succumb to the flu than they do to COVID. So if it's not a threat to their health, how do transmission rates compare among children? According to a large-scale study done by the CDC that was published this past May, it was found that no statistically significant difference in schools where children were forced to wear masks, where children were given the optional choice to wear masks. If COVID isn't a child killer and it's not spread easily among them, what is the actual benefit of wearing a cloth mask? To make adults feel safe? Why can't adults who are deathly afraid simply get the vaccine or wear a face covering themselves? If your vaccine works and if your mask works, why does it matter what anyone else chooses? It seems we rarely hear about the costs associated with making a child wear a piece of cloth over their face all day. Studies have shown that after 20 minutes, cloth masks become saturated with moisture from one's breath and become not only useless but dangerous. Not to mention, children are constantly touching their masks in their faces while adjusting them throughout the day. As an adult, having to wear masks all day, I'm guilty of the same thing. Doing so causes bacteria and germs to be transferred to their face when they otherwise wouldn't. A study from the University of Florida actually tested the masks of children and found them crawling with parasites, fungi, and bacteria. Why do we not question the psychological effects of children who are unable to read and learn social cues and emotion from their peers or teachers because their faces are covered? Is emotional and social development no longer considered in a child's development? I for one don't want my child to remember their childhood as a scary time when everyone was seen as sick and the air was toxic. If one actually takes the time to study the facts outside what the government and the biased local medical agencies provide, the cost of wearing masks by children all day greatly outweigh the benefit. If a parent wants their child to wear masks, they're still free to do so. My family has recovered from COVID and carries the antibodies, and we do not feel it necessary to mask our children all day. We should be able to make decisions concerning our children and are not forced to parent with the local school district or the government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jennifer Clarity.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Clarity. I live at 320 Madison Street in Dover. I just had four things I'd like to bring up that I questioned. One of them was, we, the board met, it was at the lecture hall, and I believe Denver's granddaughter had asked if you guys would consider something. I never, I didn't ever see anything if that got approved or not. Okay.
And I've been, and I've been building it.
I just was curious if she was able to do that. That's great.
Thank you.
And then, in the board minutes too, in today's agenda, it talks about hiring a substitute, building substitute teacher. I didn't really even know that that was a job position, which is fine, but I just will hope that you guys explain that tonight what that really entails, what that really is. And then, my two last points, the next point is kind of to my heart because my son Ryan is open enrolled at Philly. We love Philly. We went to school in Philly. We love Philly. He goes to Buckeye this year. He drives a transport bus home. First time he's ever been on a bus, but anyways, he's having so much trouble on the bus, being named called. He got his glasses pulled off of him, they got ruined, they got twisted, he's been tripped down the steps on the bus. I've called the bus garage. She's never called me back. She called me back one time and I was walking into the doctor's office. Within an hour, I called her back and still have not called me back. Now, I know that last month, you guys approved for her to get paid $400 a day to be the best coordinator, and she can't call a parent back? That's ridiculous. It makes me sad to say that I'm a Quaker, that she can't call me back. I've talked to Buckeye. Buckeye said that they would keep an eye on that student and, and stuff because some things have happened at school with that. They're taking care of that part. She said she couldn't do anything about the bus. I would really appreciate a phone call from somebody explaining what this, what is going to happen to this kid for doing this to my son. My son has some special needs too. It doesn't matter if he does or doesn't, but he shouldn't be treated that way. He shouldn't be punished for it. He won't ride the bus. I have to go to Buckeye. We were going the other side of Dover, go all the way down to Buckeye and get him, ever since this has happened, because he won't ride the bus. I'm not going, I mean, it's not fair. So I asked Ryan, and he wanted to come, but then he didn't come, whatever. I said, what would be a good solution? What would make this problem better for you? Okay, trying to give it his input. He says, I want this student to sit in the back of the bus and me sit in the front so that I can get off the bus and into you before he gets off the bus. I thought that was a pretty grown-up decision for a 17-year-old that has some delays. Both kids get to ride the bus, whatever. So I'm just disappointed that we're spending that much money on a substitute, and she can't call me back. I know, I know that we're having trouble with buses. I know that we're having trouble with routes. I feel sorry for you. I feel sorry. But my kid, he needs some attention. We need this looked at. And then, the last thing I wanted to say is, I was not at the football game on Friday, but I heard the dance team dance to a very inappropriate song. It was the "Celine" version, but it still referred to sex and bad words. That made us look, I feel, made Philly look bad from the other team playing that music. I appreciate the dance team. They always do a great job. I don't know the person that's in charge of it. It's a blessing that our district offers that to these kids to do that. But I mean, come on, there's a million and two songs out there. Can we pick a song that doesn't have bad words in it and talk about sex? Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mention, I didn't write your son's name down.
Ryan.
Ryan. Shuttle.
Yes.
The, the, the specific transportation, I guess I'm not, it's not my business, but I'm trying to visualize in my head. Are you talking about the small bus that he has some physical?
No, no, no. No, it's a full-size bus. It's bus number two.
The bus that's just going from Buckeye to Philly.
If my Ryan would walk in here, you would not know that he had special needs. I mean, Jeff knows him. You know what I mean? Like, he doesn't need a wheelchair. He doesn't need a ramp. He doesn't need an aid. He doesn't, you know what I mean? He just.
See, my son did.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to get a picture of what.
Yeah, it's a, it's bus two.
It's just a regular bus that takes all the kids from Buckeye to active high school, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And this is what, those will be items that you all look into.
Yes, absolutely. We'll look into all of those, and I can say specifically, your fourth item about the song, the QT song has already been discussed.
Okay, thank you. Item five, treasurer's report.
Okay, first thing on my agenda, I provided you all with the survey that you requested for subs. I sent out a Google Doc for everybody that belongs to the ECO ESC, which is over three counties now. What you see is what I got in return. We got an answer from Buckeye, Dover, Garaway, Knottan. Claymont did not respond, but I don't, I didn't see where they had moved. And Harrison Hills did not respond, so I kept my 2018 survey results. Indian Valley responded, Bel Air, Barnesville, St. Clairsville, and Union Local. As you can see, we are really not very out of line for any of our hourly rates or our daily rates. However, on the next page, what I did was I provided you with, I took what we paid for subs in fiscal year '21, took our current hourly rate and divided that into the total to get a total number of hours. Now, that's a rough number because we do have a couple of permanent subs in there that would kind of skew the results a bit. And then, we have a rate that we propose in order to look at the increase that it might be on our general fund. So I also did it for 2019. And the reason I used '21 as my analysis and 2019 is because during 2019, we were at full, full steam. During '21, we were in COVID times, and you'll notice that our sub custodians and our sub secretaries, we couldn't get subs at those times either. Since COVID hit, we just have not been able to get subs and keep them. So I'm providing this to you for evaluation. My recommendation would be that we raise the rates for custodians, bus drivers, and secretaries by $2 an hour, and that we increase teaching subs to, from $85 to $95 per day. And I'll let you, this is what worth chiming. Yeah, and the building sub, we do have several building subs on the agenda. That is a certified teacher who, or a substitute who is going to be able to teach every day for the rest of the school year. And so they have committed to the district to teach every day, and for that, they have an increase in pay. So that's what a building sub is. They're assigned to a specific building where they will start their day, but then there is a priority list that they follow. If there are no unfilled positions at the building where they are assigned, they go to the second building on the priority list and so forth. We have three that are going to be on the agenda, building subs. I would like to have some more. The exciting thing about these building subs, when we get to them, is that they are three people who are not currently in our sub pool. So we are not taking subs from other positions just to keep them all day long. They are teachers that we are able to bring into our district and help assist us with that something, so.
How many did we have last year?
We had two last year. We have had, I should have looked it up prior to this meeting, the number of unfilled teaching absences we're having on a daily basis is incredible. I think they had four or five at the middle school today alone, and that has been consistent. Probably at least three every day at the middle school.
We have any of these building subs, are they, any of them that are assigned to the middle?
We have one assigned to the middle school and high school for now, and two assigned to elementary buildings as their first building of priority. And then, depending on where the unfilled absences are, they, they will float. The middle school and high school have PLC periods built into their day, so there's a little more flexibility at those buildings if needed to pull teachers during either a prep or a PLC time, fill in for a sub.
I apologize. The teachers that get pulled, I get pulled from my PLC class to cover Dan's class. Do I get paid for that? Since that's a prep, if I might call it a prep, if I get pulled from my prep, this is the type of teacher we had preps, we did have PLCs. Do I get paid for that 45- or 50-minute period of time that I'm covering Dan's class?
If, if you fall under the minimum number of prep minutes that you are, that we agreed to, yes, you do. Most of those teachers have close to double the amount of prep minutes if you count PLC. It's not, it's not prep minutes. PLC minutes don't count as prep, and a lot of the times they're getting pulled from PLCs, and then they don't get paid for it. But if they lose their prep period, yes, they get paid for it.
It's paid on a time off or?
Correct.
Okay.
It's paid per negotiated agreement.
And Julie, what about our aides, our sub aides?
Well, interestingly enough, we, so the sub aides kind of fall in the same category as the sub secretaries, but our coding those two years, when they coded the aides, they did not put them as a sub code, so they're in the regular aide population without pulling every time sheet. I couldn't pull them out.
Okay.
So.
But that would fall under the, the recommended $2.
Oh, okay, good.
And I would welcome, if you'd like to take a deeper dive into this, if you'd like to set up a work session to review the information, that would.
Yeah.
And so, just a little color on availability. I mean, and what this helps us do, I guess, where are we as far as what our needs are and what we're able to actually secure as far as aide, as far as subs?
As far as subs, we have had unfilled positions across the, multiple unfilled positions every day of school so far this year. And that's everything from transportation, custodians, aides, and teachers.
So we've got a need.
We have a big need. I, my husband was reading a newspaper article yesterday or over the weekend, and according to this article, I believe in Stark County, two years ago, they had a pool of 800 some odd substitutes, substitute teachers, and they currently have a pool of 200 some substitute teachers. So while I, that was Stark County and not Tusk County, are any, and suggest that we might be in about the same position.
So Julie, based on the comment about not being able to pull information, are they, are they lumped in here under?
No, they're not.
So just overall impact, we'd have to estimate something.
Yeah.
But logically, just percentage-wise, it probably would track in a similar way.
Yes. So we, I would have to pull that out. The other thing is, our food service is not broken out, and never has been.
Okay.
So as I'm next pay, we'll start breaking everything out so that that can be easily captured information. But now, for now, if you would like us to get a subtotal for 2019 and '21, I'm gonna have to assign it and have people sit down with boxes and time sheets.
No. But essentially, though, all we're missing here is the dollar impact that the pay raise would have on the sub food service and aides. Should just be fairly similar to what we're seeing otherwise.
Yes, it should.
Yep.
Across the other.
Okay. And we can identify how many people that is, use kind of same percentage of people and just get a number of close, not sample, without going through boxes of time sheets?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Um, any questions on that? Uh, everything else is pretty straightforward. I have provided you the August financial statement, the key indicator, the cash flow, the check register, QDA's financial reports, and QPA's financial reports. Again, for both of those, make sure that you review those very carefully. It's required under our sponsorship. I saw, I've also provided the bank reconciliation report, and everything is balanced to the penny. The next line is the Trendco Roofing Project, and this is through the consortium. So we don't have to bid it because the consortium has already done the bidding process for us. This would be ESER money. So this would be part of the COVID monies that were in question. So 368,000 of it will put on a new roof where we have a desperate need for a roof at South School. It's leaking like a sieve. When it rains, we have buckets, buckets everywhere. After that, item I is, I'm requesting that you authorize me to get bids for Phase Three of the boiler project at the high school in the amount of approximately $1.3 million. And due to the dollar amount of that project, I have to be authorized to take the next step. That again is ESER money. We're completing the boiler project that we couldn't financially afford to complete, and that will convert our boilers that we installed three years ago into, I'm gonna say it backwards, steam?
Or my backwater? We converted from steam to warm water.
Steam to water, not water to steam. And then it will also redo all the piping that is, runs underneath the tunnel, underneath the floor. The estimate is $1.3 million, but we won't know until we bid it. And because it's ESER money, it is required to be prevailing wage. So that needs to be noted because that makes these projects a little more expensive than they would be otherwise.
Julie, that goes under ESER money because it works with, so it was air.
Portions of ESER are about air quality. So HVAC, roof, air conditioners, we have multiple air conditioners throughout the districts that are broken. You approved that two meetings ago, so, or three meetings ago, so we're working on those. Boilers, we have multiple boilers throughout the district that are not functioning. We are only repairing or replacing the ones that have to be. So there are multiple other ones that are aged and could use some attention, but we're doing what we can do with the money we have.
We're doing that with this money because it's an air quality cost. I know, if I'm sitting out here, I'd be thinking, how does that have anything to do with?
It is considered air quality when it's HVAC. Phase Three of the ESER money was about air quality and about technology. So while I'm speaking along those lines to answer your question, Phase Two had a piece of that that was also technology, so we're doing that. Phase Two was about lapse learning, and it's a three-year grant, so we are working with summer school for the period of time to try to get our students back to where they should be for any lapse learning. We also are doing some safety protocols with cleaning. So we have some money set aside for cleaning so that we can continue the protocols we've put in place. And along those lines, Phase One was spent pretty much on cleaning products and supplies that we had to have due to COVID during crisis. And Phase One came out very quickly, and it was a dead run to get that spent so that we could be prepared for our students. So we got a lot of the ESER money, but we're putting it to use where we are really, really lacking. So I feel like it's a good spend. You know, we have multiple services that aren't available to our students. We have students sitting in classrooms where there's air conditioners, but they don't work. So we're fixing those air conditioners in areas where they're just completely broken. We're not adding air conditioning, we're fixing what we have. So we aren't, we aren't providing that utility to the entire district, but we're trying to get back to a point where we're just on level playing ground. And we've discussed multiple times how our services need updated. So it was an opportunity to update. I will move on with my section. I have FMLA for three employees. The dual commercial excess flood insurance for the dome, that's required now because of where we sit in the floodplain. And if I remember properly, it's about the height in your floodplain. Not an expert, so that's, but that's that flood insurance. We get it every year. It's a renewal. I am requesting we approve a maintenance truck for snowplow. Our snowplow is basically done. That truck is pretty much unsafe at this point. So we did get two estimates. Right now, we're trying to get an answer on delivery time. We need the truck October, November, and we haven't gotten a commitment from either person. We got Ferris and Parkway both provided estimates, but we don't have a delivery date yet. So I'm requesting that we approve it so we can get it ordered as soon as we can figure out who can get us a truck. We have an updated lease with Graphic Enterprises for the copier at the Quaker Dome. This is $20 more per month. However, it provides color copies, and the preschool feels that And the preschool feels that uh color is necessary to make sure that the kids have their proper education and are prepared to go to kindergarten. Um. We have an updated uh service agreement with Omarisa, and this is to add translation services to our IEP software. This has been a challenge for our new special services director to implement, but by gosh, that lady is good. She took it, ran with it, and um all of our IEPs can be translated now. That's the first time in our district. Um, I provided the vitality report. That's the first one, and that's a typical report I provide. Um, there is an uh transportation agreement between Indian Valley and New Philly City Schools. This is required. It's a student who lives um on Indian Valley side, but Philly picks up right there, so we're gonna transport.
It's, it's a library new Philadelphia student who attends uh Immaculate Conception. We have never provided transportation for them. Indian Valley provides transportation. Parents, parents take the student to school. Indian Valley provides transportation from the school back to Indian Valley at the end of the day because the parents are Indian Valley employees. And so this transportation agreement simply states that we do not have any right to the transportation dollars for this student because we are not providing any transportation for that student.
Um, I've also provided a three-year contract with Solid Rock Photos. Our contract will be expiring at the end of this year, so we need another one in place. Um, we have Title III services in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars with the Stark County ESC, and those are for our EL program. Um, and then we have various uh salary moves. With that, I will entertain a motion and then any questions?
I'll move. Second.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Ask them while you were presenting. So sorry, I might have been out of turn, but you're good. Thank you.
Yeah, I know there were questions from the uh audience. Did this, this answer? Want to make sure.
Mr. Gallantine?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Leeper?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries. Last. Last but not least, in my section of the agenda is the Woody Hayes Quaker Stadium lease with the city of New Philadelphia. It has been approved on the city um by the city council. And um, we're presenting it for the board's approval. Like to entertain a motion to um approve the lease.
I'll move. Second.
Questions, concerns, statements?
I think that that stadium, that facility is an asset to everybody that's involved, and it has been for a really, really long time. And uh I, 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 down at the bottom of my heart, I just there's some verbiage in the lease that I don't truly believe it's in the best interest of the students. And um, I've maintained since we started to uh attempt to negotiate uh uh the lease with the city that it felt like that with the amount of money that the school invests in the stadium, that if a decision had to be made, the school district should have the ability to prioritize students over adults. And that's it. Uh, for limited amounts of time uh when we needed to do that. And, and I'm just I'm a little bit concerned with the specific specificity. Yeah, there you go. When we're listening, six particular reasons that we can restrict access for brief periods of time when there's not a clear way that we handle. Um, you know, we had some folks come and talk about wearing masks tonight, and that's a very real possibility that we get back to where we were unfortunately twelve months ago. And, and are we going to be in a position where we have to make a decision like that again with that facility? But those are the things that concern. I hope none of those issues come up and that my concerns are all for not um, I'm not gonna be able to support.
I just wanna thank Dave France for his hard work on the last forever on this lease. And Amy and Julie and your hard work this last few months to get where we're at. We'll work on all three parts.
Thank you, Danny.
Problem. I happen to agree with my colleague.
And um, yeah, a couple of things, and having thought through this, I think, big picture, everybody, your school district, city, I think, everybody recognizes the importance to have the lead, have a lease that allows students and families of New Philadelphia to benefit from it and community members from New Philadelphia. It's like broadly and generally, it's like we can all sure agree that it is a source of pride in the community. Most communities don't have something like our stadium. Uh, and it's also a venue that's probably one of the best in the whole region, if not the state. I mean, we're blessed to have what we have. And you know, clearly, we need to get a lease done for sure. You know, I realize there's been a lot of back and forth, and I think when there's back and forth, candidly, I think some of that's personal. I think some of that's political. It's kind of the realm that people operate in. Um, and, and you, I, I think the thing I, I know for sure is that um people sure want what's, what's best. And I, I guess for me, I'm trying to put aside what, how all we got here and trying to figure out, well, what I think is best as far as going forward. A- and that's why for me, I am supportive of, of signing the lease. I have some of the same concerns related to the, the limitations and the specificity of use. I've mentioned that at previous meetings, and I still have a concern about that. I think part of it reflects a bit of an overcorrection to what we went through. I mean, we made it through decades working collegially about keeping that stadium open and people being able to benefit from it. Uh, yeah, we went through a pandemic that, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty on all that stuff, but I think you are, you know, where we got to um was positive that, and, and that people worked hard to try to find a good outcome. And I guess at the end of the day, even though I, I think there's some limitations in the agreement that I'm a little uncomfortable with, just from the standpoint of I'm not sure we're gonna be able to meet all of it. So if somebody says, well, boy, this point in time, lane seven wasn't open, you would, that I guess could happen, but I guess it also would mean somebody would have to make an issue of it for it to be an issue. Uh, and, and the one thing that, that I guess at the end of the day, I'm also hanging my hat on here, is that the last council meeting, I know this has dragged on, you know, from both of our perspectives, really. Uh, but a- at the last meeting, you know, the mayor and, and several different council members, you know, commented on reopening the lease if there were any issues. And if we have a problem, you know, let's just get together and, and work through it and, and we'll make some modifications and you know, while a big part of me would want to square that away in the language of the agreement before we sign it, I guess I'm also just hanging my hat on the commitment that working with the city is important. And I wouldn't hold them to it. If, if we have an issue, they said, hey, if we have any issues, we're not sure we're gonna have any. Uh, they did say, hey, if we have any, we're confident the superintendent and the mayor can work it out. And you know, ultimately, I guess I am too. And I am extending some trust there that, that uh, that that's deserved. And, and I think they, that, that was meant really when it said it. And I think I'm, you know, for me, I'm, I'm taking them up on that if we have issues, because I'm sure hopeful we don't, and it works out fine. But if we do, that we'll be able to work through it. And I think at the end of the day, it's part of trying to help you know, move forward. That's been mentioned several times, you know, whether we have this contention or a need to heal or some of these different terms that are used. And I, you know, hey, recognize that it would be better to have a, a good, solid working relationship with the city. And if this helps us to move that along and, and progress it, I'm, I'm for it. So ultimately, that's, that's why I'm for it. Um, I also just want to support my colleague here, Mr. France, because there have, uh, he has worked with an intent to do what's best for kids and to do what's best for the school district. And I don't have any doubt about that. And, and there have been things uh written and said about Mr. France during this process that, in my opinion, aren't uh, they're not factually accurate. And so thank you, Dave, for that. There have been conclusions drawn from commu- and hey, we're all subject to this. I've been subject to it. We probably all have. People take things out of some context and you'll communicate that in a way that, that supports a position that sometimes makes somebody else look bad. And uh, I think some of that's happened in this case, and I just wanted you to know, Dave, that I appreciate your interest in supporting the, the district and, and where your heart has been through this. And the communication to the board has always been communication to the board. There was not a rogue effort going on here to try and do something the board was not aware of. And I think that's been, if I read through the lines, maybe something that, that is out there, but from my opinion, I didn't experience that even once. So appreciate where you're, you're coming from with uh, with that. And um, you know, end of the day, I'm just hopeful that signing the lease moves us forward. It's important to this community. We get it done. We move forward. The hopeful, optimistic part of me says, hey, we're not gonna have issues. If we do, we'll work them out. And um, you know, and, and I think at the end of the day, there is a clause in there that says, hey, we can reopen it. Reality is, it takes both parties to do that. And, and I guess it would count on if there would be an issue in this community that our council would be as interested in helping kids if it negatively impacted the district as much as we'd be willing to help the community if it impacted the council, if it impacted the community. So anyhow, that's where I'm at, and I'm planning to support it.
I would reiterate, Dave, thank you very, very much for your tireless hours and dedication. And one hundred percent, your heart has always been in the best interest of our students and making sure that we had at least that met those needs.
Um, thank you both. I appreciate that.
Um, and we'll reiterate again, the communication regarding the lease and the negotiations and the proposals back and forth was always very clear and open, and you kept us abreast of everything that was occurring. So I would reiterate that as well. Um, and then also I will hold city council and Amy, you know, they were both identified as the individuals, so in the mayor, as the people that would be able to work on. If there is an issue, hopefully there's not, but if there is an issue, um, I'm going to trust the, the mayor and superintendent. Um, so whether that's Amy and Mayor Day or whoever the next superintendent and mayor are, that they will um make sure that students are priority in this lease and this stadium and that ultimately kids need to come first and gonna welcome to that. Question?
Mr. Gallantine?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. France?
No.
Dr. Fuller?
Reluctantly, yes.
Ms. Leeper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I am six personnel. We have a plethora of personnel items on the agenda, which is exciting, especially as we spent a few minutes earlier this meeting talking about shortages. Um, we have um certified, classified, um supplemental um people, all that we are hiring. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that we are hiring an additional bus driver. So that is very exciting for the district, and he should be ready to start fully here next week. Um, so with that, um.
I have a bus for him to drive.
And we have a bus for him to drive. We do. So that should help us out tremendously. We also have some additional things in the works, but that will be a good start. Um, we also have some Kent State students who will be working with us, so they are on there for approval as well. Um, along with some additional substitutes. So with that, um, entertain a motion to accept these hirings. Second.
Mr. Gallantine?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Ms. Leeper?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We also have um as a separate item, hiring Brian Magone um for summer school. This was this past summer, and so I'd like a motion to approve that personnel item as well.
Move. Second.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gallantine?
Yes.
Ms. Leeper?
Same.
Motion carries.
Item seven, committee representative reports. Any updates report on any of the committees?
Julie covered about everything from the facilities uh meeting and her report, so I don't have anything.
This quick report, Quaker Foundation uh had a nice event with homecoming, recognizing some well-deserved uh citizens in our community, um, which was, was uh, was nice to be able to do. Uh, also now in the midst of uh classroom grant applications and every year, the foundation generally gives, you know, somewhere in the, the, the range of about fifteen thousand dollars uh roughly to uh applicable classroom grants to help uh teachers throughout the district for, for needs that they may have in their classroom. So that's uh under, underway as well. And then the last point is there will be a uh pancake breakfast fundraiser for, for the foundation in October. With something. Uh, October the ninth, so which is always a neat, neat event. So obviously I have tickets available, so. It's a good question.
Five dollars.
I think it's five bucks. What's that? It's at the park, yeah. And they are, yeah, a dollar. Yep. And a good cause for sure. So good things going then at the, the foundation. That's another.
Tickets beforehand or can you buy at the door?
Uh, you can buy at the door, I believe, but I think uh there's a lot of tickets around and out there, so either way. Okay, that's it.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Right, I have several items um in my report tonight. First of all, I asked Mrs. Lori Hall to come and share with us an update on our English language learners. Um, I will let her take it from there.
Good evening, everyone. Um, sort of honored to be here and to be able to present about a program that I feel um very near and dear to my heart. And also the, the fact that it's, it's one that is looked at in, in the local area is um something that we're doing outstanding. I have just a, a small handout for you. You can take one, pass it down. Um, sort of just giving you some basic information about the program. Um, first and foremost, to sort of understand the staffing that we have that serves our English learners. Um, it is on the side that has all of the color. Um, it is the, the staff that is in all of our buildings. Um, and one of the things that we have done over the course of the last couple of years is to continue to add um staffing for our programs because our numbers continue to gain. So um, one of the things that we added this year is a T cell endorsed teacher at the middle school. That was a new position. She is also um spending part of her day as a Spanish teacher between Welty and the high schools, but the other part of the day, she's working with those intensive students that are coming to us, not just um learning a second language, but as an interrupted um education student. So um, we have that offered now at Welty, which is new. We have it previously the last couple of years at um West and at Central. Um, and that is um a title teacher, Ruth Maholic. And then at the high school, we have um Jeremy Rogers and Talon Petruolo that work with those students. So um, New Philly is very unique. Besides the amount of English learners that we have here in the district, um, we have students that come to us with limited education. So it's sort of a double uh pronged approach that we have to work with these students, not only in learning English language, but also giving them basics that they did not receive uh wherever they're coming to. And for the most part, a lot of them are coming from Guatemala, as you probably know. Um, so I wanted to let you know what our staffing looks like. We have an interpreter assigned to every one of our buildings. Um, so that is something that um we have in place and have had in place. There are situations that there might not be an interpreter for one reason are, are not in the building, but we do have that covered. We have um contracted a um translation um business that basically we can pick up the phone and they can, we tell them the language that we need, and they will be there on the spot to be able to work with whatever's needed at that particular time. Um, so I wanted to point out that to you. Um, second of all, um, on the reverse side is the enrollment over the last couple of years of our English learners. And um, as you probably were aware, back in the spring, there was a lot of talk on the news about um students coming from Guatemala. um, students coming from Guatemala that were held up in shelters in Texas and Arizona. And we're definitely seeing those particular students coming to New Philly. Um, and what the characteristics of the students are, typically they're male. They're between the ages of fourteen to seventeen, and they are coming here without a parent, so they're unaccompanied minors. We've seen an increase of about twenty-five students alone just in um, that high school range. Um, and it did.
Just this year?
Just this year. So we have almost hit the mark of four hundred English learners in our district. Um, that is not including Latino students. So as you can imagine, we have a lot of students that are proficient in English that don't qualify for our program. Um.
So we be clear, an EL student, somebody could come to us, say right now, as an EL student and however long it takes to take for them to become proficient in English, it could be this March. They're no longer an EL student. They're simply a
Yes.
Like everybody else because they've mastered the English language and
Yeah.
Need that help anymore. Or whether it's a Hispanic kid or a French kid.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we test them every February, March.
Okay.
There's a test given, and so then we find out if kids exited the program.
How do you determine where they go when they come in?
How do I determine?
By, I think it's quite obvious, but.
By law, um, it's you um, have them placed as close as chronologically as to what their peers are. Um, so that's why at the high school level, we can't take them all the way back to elementary if they've had no education because that's not what the law says. So we place them at the lowest as what we can at the high school, which is as a freshman student.
What about determining whether they qualify for EL services or not?
So the last couple of weeks, I've been spending a lot of time testing all of these new students. So there's testing that is involved as they enter us to determine that. And the way that we do that is the parents fill out a a form um, with the help of our interpreter, um, during the registration process. If they put anything on the home language survey, which is what it's called other than English, we test them. And then from that test, we make the determination. If they don't pass it, obviously then they're considered um, for services. I have thirty days to test those students at the beginning of the year, send out notification to all of them. Um, and their family is telling them what services that they qualify for. So it's very um, time bound as so when all of that going, if they arrive in November, I have fourteen days to do all of that. Um, so very excited, um, finishing up doing all that testing. We also, all of our kindergarten students that we got that are designated or what we think is English learners had to be tested as well. So for just this school year, at this point, we have about seventy-five new students to New Philly. Um, where we're meeting that threshold of almost four hundred students um, in the district. So um, the process is continual and it goes on throughout the year. So anytime there's a new one, we have that test that we have to give them and then um, any identification um, of the students being English learners, we have to send that paperwork home. Um, just sort of wanted to give you two sort of an overview as a district, what we're responsible for. Julie made mention about the fact, very exciting, um, that we now have a software program that's tied into our um, IEP program that automatically does the translating. What would happen previously would be one of our interpreters would take that information, most likely it'd be translated through Google Translate, and that's not always the best. So then they would oversee and and sort of correct anything. So now that we have this program already in place, um, it's it's very helpful. Um, we know that the other responsibility that we have um, as a district is um making sure anything that's generated by the district, by the buildings, by the classrooms, is sent home in the language that the the families have requested. And at the beginning of the year, I run basically every report and give those to every single building as to these are the families, these are because some of them, like I mentioned, they are now not English learners, but their family is still needing something in another language. So all of the buildings have that information um, as to who they need to send that out. We've got into um, a good practice. I'm sort of just uh, one side being English, the other side being Spanish. But a lot of our families do not speak or write Spanish. They're they're, you know, have dialects, but there's nothing written. So we do have an interpreter that um, does a lot of our registration, who's wonderful, by the way. Um, and that's one thing I wanted to mention, and I didn't at the beginning. We are so lucky with the staff members that we have. They truly have dedicated a lot of time um, on their own time to working with these families and with with these students. Um, from getting immunizations for them. Um, there's a document that comes home. They can't read it because they're not reading what Spanish is. So we have the obligation to orally tell them what the paper says. So there's a Google voice number that one of the um, interpreters has in place that within twenty-four hours, that's what she she does. She calls them back. Um, any of those common documents, like I said, that needs to go home. We have a service that we um basically pay for that's called TransAct. So if there's a field trip coming up, instead of us having to recreate that, there's a program that we pay for that will translate it into any language that basically at a click. So we have that um, in place. I mentioned about um, Propio is the name of the um, translation service that we can call um, and get a translator on the phone. Um, and the other thing that we're working on this year, we had our report cards at the middle school and the high school. Any of the comments that were made were already translated, so they would be an English comment, but then whatever it would be in Spanish, it would be there as as well. Um, at the elementary level, we would just translate any of the comments. So what we're in the process is doing is making a template for the elementary um, report card, so the parents can get a little bit more information as those go home. So one of the interpreters is working on that, um, so that the families will have that then this fall. Um, the other thing that I think was a positive change and something we didn't really think about, um, is that we have a lot of outside agencies, entities that want to use our students as cur- as curiers to take home information. So there is um, a QT clinic or there is um, a Bible uh, school going on in the community. We, for the most part, approve all of those, but you know what? Those were always going in English. So one of the things that I know Mr. Williams is looking over this year is making sure that if you want us to send this home for you, we gladly will, but it needs to be translated for all of our students. So we're in the process. Um, as I mentioned at the very beginning, we truly are a model locally. Um, there's not any other district locally. That has the the amount of students that we do. Um, was one of the the schools that I talked to um, this past week was Dover. And they still are, even though they have a hu- population, they still have about hundred students less than what we do. Um, but it, we're in a unique situation, but I think one that our staff has has truly sort of embraced. And we definitely have people that are advocates for these families and students in our district. As we move forward, one of the things that um, I would like to continue and actually where there is um, some work out there that I have done is um, working with the University of Cincinnati to get more of our teachers. There's a grant actually opportunity um, to give them T cell endorsed because um, we're not going to have interpreters for every single classroom. We know that. Um, so we need to equip our teachers with tools on how to teach um, English learners. So with this grant, um, we would be in a cohort and basically um, for any teacher that's interested, there's about forty, they said, that they would be able to take. They would be able to give them all of their T cell classes to be um, T cell endorsed. And then eventually come to us and sort of give them feedback as they have English learners in their classrooms. So it's exciting that that's an opportunity out there. We're still waiting to hear if we're accepted or not. Um, New Philly and Camp City, where locally we're once that were invited to be participants of that grant.
Great.
Any questions? Thank you.
I I do, um, I was trying not to get into the weeds, but just kind of curious how how this works. So with the communication that we're interpreting to send home, when things come up, do those, do the, do the individual teachers contact the interpreter? Do the teachers contact the principal? Contacts interpreter, but when there's a need like at that specific, this, are there hundred fifty people going to the interpreter or how does the information flow?
So what we generally say is if it's a classroom teacher that has something that needs to go home from their classroom, our interpreters can't.
You know, that kind of. Yep, okay.
Do it through Google Translate.
Yep.
If you have some questions, then show the translator or the interpreter as to, you know, does this look okay? But yeah, we don't have the manpower for our interpreters to to look at all of it. So Google Translate is our friend.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, it's not always accurate.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I have a quick, just getting in the weeds, I guess. Uh, if a young boy or girl, whatever age, second grade or eighth grade, comes to us, non-English speaking on a typical day, they're not gonna learn English in a week or even a year, you know, what what today, tomorrow is Tuesday, what's what's his or her gonna be like as far as getting them the English uh, information they needed to teach them to speak English?
So basically, our per- program is an immersion program.
Yeah.
What means that they're in a classroom with a teacher who is using the scaffolds that we have presented through PSYOP training. It's just a a type of way, basically, to teach any student. But there's just strategies and techniques they're gonna utilize that will be helpful for that for that student. So as far as communicating that basic thing, um, that that student might need using an app on their phone to have those conversations back and forth with a student, um, is what they generally use. But for the most part, it's it is immersion and we're relying on teachers using those techniques and strategies. Um, that are research-based for English learners.
Thank you.
I just say too, I wanna add, I I I've been out to the buildings a lot, trying to get a feel for things and to add to that, our students and staff at New Philly are so accommodating and and helpful in getting those kids acclimated and building their confidence wanting them to be in school and learn. So then I felt you could add that too.
It's great. It's there, and you, this is one you could think of if you don't have an immediate answer, but if if there were resources needed or if we were going, or if we were gonna allocate more resources, do we have a glaring need somewhere that we should be thinking about more resources? Or is what you laid out here as far as how we're serving and getting us through there?
More teachers that are T cell.
Okay.
And especially at the high school. I'm very concerned because the amount of um, students that came in this summer was huge. Um, those classrooms that Talon and Jeremy have are bursting.
Yeah.
Um, and so we don't have control over when the next group comes in.
Yeah.
Um, but our register person, she's not been done yet registering. She's still, she does that on Wednesdays. Um, and a lot of times it's a, you know, a wait that we have to get documents, that kind of thing before they can actually start. A lot of these students don't officially enroll in school until they have an appointment with immigration. Because immigration wants to see that they're enrolled.
Sure.
So a lot of them, even though they should be in school right this minute because school has started, they sort of wait the game. Um, most of them are working if they're those high school age kids. Um, so they're they're working um, to pay back debts as to what got them here because it was very costly to them and their family. And the sponsors that they're living with, sometimes are no relative whatsoever. So it's someone that their family basically hired to house their their child. So they wait to enroll in school just because they you know, are are working and are busy doing that. Um, and it's usually until they get that appointment with immigration that we don't see them, they'll come in. When we ask them, how long have you been here? Oh, four or five months. Um, and because no one's pressing for them to get here until they have those appointments.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for what you're doing.
Sorry for all you, for your report and for your good work to truly make this a program that other people look to as a model. So thank you for that. Um, a few more items. Um, the next few are are fairly quick. Um, in your board folder, there were new sponsorship policies for QDA and QPA. Those are updated um, policies. Uh, new job descriptions for the assistant superintendent and the director of preschool and English language learners, reflective of the duties that we had previously discussed, how we were going to tweak those things. And then finally, I did want to give you health and safety updates and kind of let you know where we are right now. Clearly, COVID is still here and still a very big issue. Um, before I get to those specific numbers, I do want to tell you that there has been a slight change. Um, I know you have heard me say a couple of times now that the, we have no ability to use a remote learning model because the deadline to do so was July first. Well, they have now extended that deadline to make that application for a blended learning model uh, to the end of November. And so I made application at the end of last week. It has already been approved. So should we be required to move into a blended learning situation? We will have some flexibility and ability to do that. The basic requirement for blended learning is that overall throughout the course of the year, a student would spend fifty-one percent or more of their time in face-to-face instruction. So as long as that is true, then we would have flexibility to count those hours where a student might be learning remotely as part of their school day. Now, it is not quite as expansive or I'll say forgiving as the um, language in the law last year. Um, we have to specifically track hours. And so a student would have to spend an entire school day at home. Um, either engaged in content that we can verify he's engaged in on the computer or um, the parent would have to document that the student has spent a full school day working at home, and then the teacher would have to sign off on that. And those are audit to bold documents. So whereas last year it was more, there was a little bit more of, okay, you say you're going to do it, you did it. This year, there's a lot more accountability as far as the hours requirement. So um, but I did want to let you know that 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 has been a change and um, that's already taken care of. So we are.
Gives us the opportunity.
It just gives us the opportunity. It doesn't commit us to doing anything.
Okay.
Yes. Um, as far as COVID and COVID numbers, I provided for you a graph so that you can kind of see where the COVID numbers have been. We have been in school for four weeks now, and we're starting week five. The first week was not a full week. We started on a Wednesday. So the first week of school, staff and students, we had seven cases of COVID identified at New Philly. Um, the second week, we had ten. That was a full week. The third week, we had twenty-one new cases of positive cases identified at New Philly. And then last week, we were down to twelve cases. Um, that's a cumulative number of forty-seven student cases that have been identified and five staff cases that have been identified. Um, we have also been tracking um, who was wearing masks, who is not. And um, in some cases, we know that um, when students and staff are vaccinated, if they share that information with us. So we know that of the fifty-two total positive cases, seven of them were wearing masks in school and four of them were actually vaccinated per their self-reporting. Um, there may be additional ones that we're unaware of, but we are aware that that is the case. Um, as of two o'clock today, we had eight active student cases. We had one active staff case and forty-four additional students who were in quarantine. Those numbers are down a bit from a couple of weeks ago. Um, at one point during the week of September sixth, we were up to twenty-two active cases. So we are down a little bit significantly from that. Um, it kind of goes in cycles. Typically on Mondays, we get several cases. Last couple of weeks, it's been five new cases on a Monday, six new cases. Today, we had two as of two o'clock. So those numbers are down a little bit. And um, like I said, I haven't tracked it since June. That's when I pulled the data. So there's a potential, there were some others sitting out there as well. So I want to be transparent of that. Um, contact tracing, you asked about the contact tracing rules. Um, in order to be identified as a contact, a student um, who is not masked or vaccinated has to spend fifteen minutes or more per day within three feet of a student who's identified as COVID positive. So um, we are required to share the names of close contacts with the health departments. And then the health departments make notification to those students and provide them with quarantine dates. As a district, we don't provide students with dates because we don't quarantine healthy students. That is a function of the health department. We do call all of those students or contact them and let them know that they were identified as close contacts. Um, your second question, I believe, is how many positives have arisen from the contacts that have been identified?
Out of the forty-four.
Well, out of the forty-four now, none of them are currently positive. Um, since the beginning of the year, we've had many more students who have been in quarantine and and now are not. I've identified three different situations where um, close contacts did them become positive cases where there wasn't already a family connection. Now, we've had siblings that I have not included in my totals. Um, one of those three cases um, involved um, Um, one of those three cases um involved um members on a sports team. That then there were um multiple students on the sports team who became positive. One of those cases, um, students were in the same classroom and they became positive. Um, those students also had a birthday party on the weekend where they were all together prior to that week. Um, and then the last case um were students in a classroom. Two students in the same class who shared actually multiple classes who both became positive. And it, the information that I had is that those students were masked, those two were masked at least part of the time during that time. So does that answer your question, sir?
The health department is who defines close contact for you. It gives you the, the, the parameters, the rubric, whatever, that here's how you identify a close contact.
The Ohio Department of Health, determiner.
So you're getting the same information from the county and, because we've got maybe what, ten percent of the kids falling under the county, fifteen maybe?
There is some interpretation differences between the two health departments about.
Okay.
Some close contacts. There is a bit of um a discrepancy. If the student who becomes positive was masked, whether or not that will generate a close contact. Um, one health department says that if that student was masked, we don't have to do any contact tracing. Um, the other health department says it doesn't matter if that student was masked, we still have to contact trace and identify any students around them that weren't masked.
Well, is that only students that are under the authority of the particular health department? So if a county health department kid, I'm making guesses now. Let's say the county is the one that says, don't care if you're wearing a mask or not, it counts. If the three foot away, if you are from New Philly and I'm living out by Stone Creek someplace.
It's determined by where the positive student lives.
So the county health department or the city health department could have sway over a family. Not necessarily under the jurisdiction of the particular, okay, correct.
Yeah, Amy, uh, question. Says here, the number of additional students in quarantine is forty-four, does that mean that as of tomorrow morning is. Or Tuesday, as of Tuesday morning, we only have forty-four quarantined or is that forty-four added to? We're already, it's, you know, what's the total tomorrow morning? When they walk into school, what's the, or you may not have this exact number, but more broadly, what's the total number of not attending some of the schools because they're quarantined?
Um, it's forty-four plus the active student and the active staff, staff cases, so forty-four plus nine. So there are currently fifty-three in quarantine.
Okay.
I was trying to distinguish who was a positive case and who was not. Um, that is as of two o'clock today, that number will drop tomorrow morning. Um, actually, we'll have student cases drop and we'll have quarantine drops because some of them come off at the end of today.
Okay.
But I am sorry, I didn't look that.
No, 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 that's good.
Let you know.
I was making comparison to that school across the river that has a different number and I.
Yeah, we have fifty-three total that are, the health department has quarantined right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to the?
So on, on the quarantine front. Within our buildings, we're responsible for keeping track of close contacts. Correct or being able to track them down if somebody tests positive. So then some personnel within the school district needs to spend time to try to identify based on the criteria we were given. These students were exposed. And, and so then at that point, though, the rules as far as. Whether that child needs to quarantine or not, those rules are determined by the health department, is that right? And so then they will lay out for you, they have a flow chart or something that lays out, okay, didn't, were they AVC? Were they wearing a mask, were they not, are they symptomatic, those types of questions, right? So then if they get to that place, then where um, where, where they're, they're not masked. Uh, and, and even if they're asymptomatic, based on the health department criteria, those kids are going to get quarantined.
Correct.
Right? And, and that period of time is.
Um, they're quarantined typically for ten days from the date of exposure. They can come back at, on day seven if they have a negative COVID test on days five, six, or seven.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So at the earliest, we were getting five days at the.
Well, can't come back until day seven.
Day seven.
So it, you have a week.
Now, the health department have to verify the negative test or they just bring a card in?
They share their negative test result with me, we document that and if they can return. The health department does not verify that, they just give them the information and they leave it to schools to verify.
Gotcha.
We are seeing an increase in students voluntarily wearing masks um at all buildings. Especially at the middle school and high school. Our teachers and coaches have been pretty forthright in sharing the information that if you are wearing a mask, you will not have to be quarantined. And um, for many of our athletes and even our students, um, some of them have chosen to wear masks. Um, so that they're not put in that situation.
Mm-hmm.
When would you say that started?
Um, it's gradually been increasing. Um, you guys are in the buildings, probably have a better, it's been increasing over the past couple of weeks. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I would say in my building, at the beginning, there were maybe two, three, four teachers. And I'm probably ninety-five percent of the teachers and probably like the same trend with students. You know, as they start to understand what it means to be masked and then not be considered a close contact, we had that situation on Friday. Um, so, yeah, they're just voluntarily doing it.
Because based on that, the, that chart, I mean, when, when it comes to the idea of trying to keep our kids in school in person a hundred percent of the time. That's clearly what our goal would be, I guess, assuming what we've been through the last year plus. That not having kids in school, having kids remote, all of the challenges with that. I mean, with our teachers and staff, school employees did an admirable job working with folks under really adverse conditions last year. I can get that and, and appreciate that. And, and I guess mostly just trying to make sure I understand when it comes to the, the quarantining aspect. If we're going to keep kids in school and keep kids on the playing field or in the gym or in the band room or wherever they are. If kids, ju- and just from a quarantining standpoint, I'm not saying anything related to effectiveness or you all the like. But just related to, for following the rules laid out by the health department, if kids were wearing masks, they're not going to have to quarantine.
That is correct.
Okay. And if they're, I mean, voluntarily, if they are, then as we're keeping, we were keeping track of that as well. So friends have that choice to have their kids come to school, wear the mask, knowing that that'll limit the possibility of the disruption of.
Yes.
Quarantine.
Our teachers um on their daily attendance indicate who has masks on in case we need that information for contact tracing later.
Yeah.
So you can be a spreader if you're wearing a mask. But you cannot be a receiver if you're wearing a mask. Isn't that what you said, the one?
One health department says.
Sorry.
That um, wearing a mask will negate any close contacts. The other health department says it doesn't matter if you're positive and wearing a mask, we still have to identify the close contacts.
But both of them agree, if you are wearing a mask, you don't have to quarantine if the guy beside you tested positive regardless of their masking scenario.
Correct.
Okay. It's complicated.
It is complicated.
And then just, just one other question, I know we talk to a lot of people, we have forces that are invested in this for sure. When it comes to our, our local, um, well, like Cleveland Clinic, our local hospital. And, and, and any of their feedback, I get their agencies and, and departments and people who are trying to do their job from that standpoint. When, when it comes to any, do we get any, I know we don't get guidance from them per se that, that were held to. But do we have any conversation with them or have we had any conversation with them? Guess I'm going off of is looking at, at, you know, the, the, what the title, I don't know. The chief medical officer, whatever, from the, from Cleveland Clinic Union Hospital that was, you know, making suggestions related to things. They would look for schools or school districts to, to do. Have we had any conversation or should we have any conversation with those folks?
I have had no direct conversation, I was actually in a meeting um with the Cleveland Clinic Union Hospital Chief Medical. I just lost his title.
Okay, yeah, sounds like the same person, yes, okay.
Yeah. His face-to-face presentation, I have not had any, I didn't have any dialogue with him, but I was part of that meeting.
Okay.
And what was his recommendation?
His recommendation, um, well, he was specifically spending most of his energy talking about vaccinations. Um, and the need for vaccinations, um, he is definitely pro-mask in general.
Okay.
The meeting wasn't geared necessarily towards school. I was an educator in the midst of a larger group, so he didn't specifically speak to schools when I was.
And I guess coming out of O D H and the governor's office, what, what are you feeling like? Their most recent recommendation is in regards to schools and the children's hospitals and what are they saying?
Um, the governor is definitely promoting masking, um, he's unwilling to make a mandate, he wants schools to make those mandates. Um, many medical professionals are also promoting that.
What other outside of cleaning a lot? About making sure that families that choose to wear a mask are comfortable, what other steps are we taking?
Well, we, we are definitely continuing our enhanced cleaning protocols. We started last year, they were incredibly impactful. Um, we are also continuing to encourage families to do symptomatic checks before they send children to school. We don't want sick children to come to school. I have um been playing phone tag with the company who did the online screener for us last year to see about implementing that as well. And then just continuing to encourage families that if they're concerned about contracting this disease or about being quarantined. That um, they make that choice to wear a mask. Any other questions? That, there's, I guess we should have had a motion before we started asking questions again, we kind of got out of turn here. But um, motion to approve my report.
So move. Second.
By the way, thank you, Amy, for what you and other folks are doing. I know that, that and other things are uh creating challenges. And we've got uh people doing admirable work, so appreciate that.
Welcome, my pleasure.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Ms. Leaper? Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, motion to move into executive session to consider appointment to special discipline compensation of a public employee and investigation of charges of complaints against a public employee.
We have something to talk about.
Yeah, I have nothing to talk about.
Hearing non-motion dies on the floor.
Item ten, adjournment.
Move.
Yes.
Does it need a second?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Ms. Leaper? Mr. Weaver, Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries.